Pro neighborhood and pro small business.
Great. Ken?
I'm Ken Weiss, also running for place three. I've lived in Austin for over thirty-eight years. I've owned two small family businesses here over twenty years. Got my education here in Austin, got a bachelor's degree in business from Concordia University. Currently working on my master's in business with a concentration in accounting. I was in the Texas Army National Guard as an officer for over five years. And I'm currently married over almost six years now.
Right.
I'm Randy Shade, and I first got to Austin, like many people, to start at the University of Texas. I graduated in nineteen eighty-eight. I went on to earn an MBA from Harvard Business School. I spent four years working in the governor's office. My primary responsibility was to launch something called AmeriCorps, which allowed people to do a year of community service and earn money for college afterwards. I went on after that to launch a company called Charity Gift, which I ended up selling to publicly traded company in two thousand and five.
Great. The Stop Domain Subsidies Charter Amendment will go before voters in November. Under what circumstances do you think the city should give tax incentives or abatements to developers or businesses? Jennifer, we'll start with you.
Okay. First of all, I would not have passed that amendment, the Stop Domain Subsidies. I would not have approved it had I been on the council. That being said, when we do have incentives, they have to be performance-based. And they also have to be for targeted jobs, like in clean energy, renewable energy, like we just did for Heliovolt, which is producing new technology that's going to help the whole world fight global climate change. I also want to make sure there would be community benefits, like paying a living wage, supporting small local businesses, and making sure that it's fair to everyone, and we do very few of them. And I think that businesses in general have to pay their fair share of taxes. And they should be lucky to be here, and if they want to be here, they should be able to enjoy paying for the good quality life that we all enjoy here in Austin.
Okay. Ken?
I agree. I don't believe we should be paying businesses that come here. I think it hurts our overall economy to give away taxpayer money for that. I do support small businesses, having been a small business owner and operator for quite some time. One of the things that I may propose as a next city council member is a small business stimulus package, where we can maybe perhaps give some kind of sales tax rebates or utility rebates to small businesses who want to expand based on their performance in the past. Because I know it does cost a lot to expand if you wanted to open a second location, for example, or just expand your existing businesses. Some of that can help offset the cost of either renting additional space or hiring additional employees. So that'll have to be something more in the future.
Okay, great. Randy?
Well, I think that I'm very skeptical about retail subsidies, specifically the domain subsidies that are being discussed right now. But I think that there is a place for the city to play a role in economic development, particularly targeted industries that do create jobs, that help people at all income levels and with all educational backgrounds. I think that's good for our community. I think the key factor is that when we're doing any kind of public-private partnership, that the benefits of the partnership have to outweigh the costs associated with them. And I think that having transparency is critical, and that we use these tools very judiciously, and that it's very clear that if the performance metrics aren't met, the benefits aren't paid.
Contract negotiations are currently underway between the city and the Austin Police Association. Do you think the new contract should include the consolidation of other law enforcement agencies, such as the Parks and Airport Police, under the Austin Police Department? Why or why not? Ken, why don't you start?
Well, first I have to say that I have to admire the men and women that put on that uniform every day, whether it be fire department or police department. I have several friends who are in the police department. And they're willing to stand up and do a job that, having come from the military, that I know it's a dangerous job, and every day they risk their lives. As far as consolidating, some of the numbers I heard was like eleven million dollars to consolidate all those into one. I would have to see, first of all, what other benefits would be gained from consolidating them. I mean, right now, I don't know why they want to consolidate them. If they're broken, then we need to look at fixing the problem, not just by consolidating. So I would have to look into further that. I know that some of the other smaller departments don't have as high a standards as far as what's required of their officers than does the APD.
Randy?
You know, I am obviously, like every citizen, going to be watching very closely as there's more public process going on with the current negotiations that are underway. I've been supported by all three of the public safety unions, public, you know, police, EMS, as well as fire, and I'm proud to have their support. And I think the most important thing is that we negotiate in good faith and that there's open communication. As far as the consolidation issue specifically that you've asked about, I'm skeptical about the cost savings. I haven't seen enough data on it, and I've been in, you know, I've worked in corporate America. I've worked with a small business that ultimately I sold to a larger company. So I know that a lot of times consolidations end up adding costs instead of saving costs. So I would definitely want to look at that. However, I understand too that there were some training issues that were also to be addressed by this. And I think, again, it may be an organizational culture change that's needed, maybe more than an organizational structure change. So I would look at that as well.
Okay. Jennifer?
Well, I supported the resolution for consolidation because of potential financial liability to the city. They are not police officers, but they also, at the same time, they perform police duties. And also, the training is very different when you look at the amount of hours that they have in training, also with the mental health training requirement. I think that's very important for anyone who's coming in contact with the public in a public safety role. And so that is the reasoning for the consolidation. It's financial, but also for safety for the public, as we had some high-profile incidents recently. But we have to watch our spending, and we have to watch the budget and take that into account as well. And so we'll have to see what we can afford as we are heading into a downturn possibly.
The city's solicitation ordinance has been declared unconstitutional twice. Some people in the community are very vocal about trying to control, about the desire to control panhandling. Others say there should be more compassionate programs to help the homeless. What is your solution? We'll start with Jennifer.
Well, I passed a resolution to look at how to address the panhandling issue in a way that's comprehensive and compassionate. Because, first of all, we do have to enforce our existing laws on banning solicitation in the roadway where it is, there's a state highway. It's very dangerous for the drivers, as well as the people who are in those intersections. And I've seen incidents that give me real concern about the safety of those people. At the same time, I think we need to improve our utilization of programs like Project Recovery, Rancher Roundtable, that help the homeless get into jobs and transition into jobs and into housing.
Ken?
Yes, I believe that, well, public safety is a big issue among the homeless standing on street corners. You know, accidents can occur, and they're standing there just on the corner, and cars weigh a lot, weigh a lot. So one of the things that I would like to see is that we work on identifying those homeless that are chronic homeless and those that are homeless for other reasons that may need help. Maybe they just lost their jobs, or maybe they got divorced and have nowhere else to go. And try to help those folks transition from off of the street corners back into society and to be somebody contributing to society versus being a drain on society. So let's help those people.
Randy?
Well, I've, like many people that have watched this issue over time, you know, have been concerned about us not moving in a direction to criminalize homelessness and poverty. I think that that's something that our city can do a lot better at addressing through treating the root causes of the problem. And what I've seen is that there's a suggestion, there's roughly four to five thousand people who are in this category of homeless, and only a small percentage of those are actually chronically homeless. This is a problem that we can solve by making it a priority and addressing, again, as I said, the mental health, the domestic violence, the alcohol and substance abuse issues that are the root causes. So I want to advocate for that. As far as enforcement goes, I think that, like many of the ordinances that we have on the books, enforcement is a real challenge, and we've got to give our public safety people the tools that they can consistently enforce what's on the books.
Jennifer, you voted in favor of offering Las Manitas Restaurant a forgivable loan. Can you please explain why? And Ken and Randy, what specific things should the city be doing to retain and draw more businesses to Congress Avenue?
Well, I learned a lot from that experience. First of all, I don't think this council should have gone in that direction. I think it was a mistake. When I realized that there was support on the council to pass it, what I did was try, what I did was increase the amount of the repayments of that loan by shortening the years of the terms of the loan so that it would go into a revolving fund that would go to other small businesses that face similar issues. And their issue really is fairness, that businesses want to be treated fairly. And so that was my way of trying to make sure that this was more fair. But at the end of the day, it was something that they ended up not taking, and I'm glad they didn't. And it was because the terms were too strict on them in their mind. And so that is, that's something that we need to do, is make sure that help all small businesses with our programs in general and not just favoring one particular business or another.
Ken?
Well, businesses, just like regular people, I mean, they need affordability. Just like the citizens here in Austin need affordable housing, businesses need affordable places to rent. I believe Congress Avenue is just going to be one of those areas where, you know, it's going to be high-dollar rent. And I know from being a small business person that there's a lot of mom-and-pop type shops that can't afford a dollar, two dollars, three dollars a square foot to rent. So we need to look at those issues. It comes back to also VMU. And while VMU is great for bringing density to Austin, it hurts the small businesses by taking away the older, more affordable retail strip malls. And putting in VMU, it raises that level of square footage dollar to small businesses. And trying to make payroll at the end of the month and whatnot is a strain on some small businesses.
Randy?
Well, I think that the Las Manitas debacle was one of the ones that got me off the couch and drove me to want to run for city council. I mean, to watch the council react to this situation in the way that they did was just shocking to me. As a person who's run a small business and who knows plenty of people who do, I just couldn't believe that there would be a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant given to one business over all others. And I understand the importance of maintaining businesses along Congress Avenue, but in this case, this business even...